Good evening. We're going to hereby call the January 22, 2024 meeting of the Towne Hansen Planning Board to Order at 6:39 PM. I would also like to announce for those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution of WHCA Community Access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at whca.tv. That's W H C A dot TV. With that call to order, we have an attendance tonight, myself, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Kement. We have the planning office in full. Mr. Ellis and Mr. Benarano are not here today. We're hoping Mr. Ellis feels better. We knew Mr. Benarano was not going to be here, but all the best to Mr. Ellis will be feeling better. The first item of business on our agenda is the approval of the January 8, 2024 Public Meeting Minutes. Motion to approve. Motion has been made?
And I'll second them. I wasn't at the meeting, but I did read them over.
All right, so motion has been made promptly seconded by Mr. Cohen in regards to approval of the minutes. Any discussion regards to that motion?
Mr. Chair, by my own.
Absolutely. We got a mic one ready?
Thought I did.
That's all right. We'll have that up in a while.
Yeah, I can. We can send that.
Just for the minutes, the town planner is going to be passing on our new Mullins signatory sheet to this fellow. Any discussion regards to the motion for approval of the January 8 minutes? Seeing none, all is a fair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed. 302 minutes are approved for January 8 evening. Seeing the time have arrived, we are going to go on our agenda to the continued MBTA zoning district update. We have a public hearing starting at 6:41 to provide progress update and discuss preliminary zoning bylaws in conformance with Master Plan Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A of the Zoning Act. Town Planner?
So the draft bylaws that I have as far as I can take them, I have taken them as far as I can at this point.
Okay.
So at this point, I'm going to pass them on to VHB for review and also Town Council for review.
VHB for?
Yes.
For the records of VHB?
PHB is the consultant that we were working with on the MBTA regulations and district. So I had asked the board if there was any edits that the board had. They passed that along to me. So what I'd be looking for this evening on this particular public hearing is to close the hearing. And the reason is May Town Meeting is actually coming up quicker than we may think.
Right.
So one of the things that I'm looking to do is to close the hearing, have the board make a motion to accept the district as withdrawn, also to have a motion to accept the zoning bylaws, the draft zoning bylaws. I'd like that word draft to be in that motion. And the reason is I need to submit these to the select board for their consideration. Now, what's going to happen is the select board is going to turn around and give them back to the planning board.
Right.
And it may seem odd that that's being done, but under the zoning act, that's how it has to, the process has to work. So the select board will then, I'm hoping to get these submitted either for their January 30 meeting or their February 6 meeting. Then what would happen is they would turn around and give it back to the planning board and we would have a public hearing. I have to advertise two weeks in a row. My expectation with all the dates is that on the 26th of February will be the planning board hearing to discuss those zoning bylaws, to discuss the district, and then if the board so approves, we'll make the report. We'll make that report that's being required and we keep following the process that's required on the Section 5 of the zoning act.
Okay.
Can I ask a question before we go to the votes?
Mr. Kement?
In the area, in the section of affordability requirements, it doesn't have a page number, but it's toward the back. My question is, there's a couple of paragraphs, fee and loop, and it's in red, right? So to me, I don't know what that means, I guess.
I could get you information on that so that you can read the, what that means that under the, when they sent out the draft bylaw, when the state sent out the draft bylaw?
Yep.
They explain what that means.
Okay.
And if I can.
The only, the only reason I ask is because I like what it has to say. And I'm wondering if this in red means that it's coming out or it's, it can be looked at for legal stuff?
I put it in there because I needed additional information and legal consultation on that.
Okay.
Let me just see.
There's some kind of good stuff in there. I'd hate to see that disappear.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Just for clarification, if the hearing is closed and these are approved, is it, is it the select board that's going to be having council review or are we requesting council review?
I will be requesting council review.
When it comes back from the select board?
Yes, I might, this might be kind of like send it up to the town council because we know that their timeline sometimes they take a while. So I might be sort of getting it up to them for their review. There's a lot of things that sort of have to work together because one of the other things that I'm going to be doing is sending this up to the state for review. And that has to be 90 days before the annual town meeting. So basically by the beginning of next month, I have to file this and they'll know that it's draft. But they'll at least get a look at it and they'll be able to tell us, yes, you're in conformance. Keep moving towards your annual town meeting to try and get it approved.
I didn't know if there was a way that we could do that where we could cut it and light two views at the same time. Where we get select board and council and the same?
Yes, actually that is my intention.
Okay. So can, just one more quick question before we go to that vote is, so once we close the public hearing, right? We can't make any changes to this, is that true?
Correct. Any changes would be once it comes back to the public hearing. Because what's going to happen is you're basically saying, what you're doing is as the planning board is just saying, we're proposing these zoning amendments.
Right.
And we're proposing this district. And now you have to give it, you're the body that's proposing it, so you have to give it to the select board. The select board has to take it under consideration. And what the select board does is if they, once they take it under consideration, they turn it around and they hand it back to the planning board and say, give us a report. And that's where you have to follow the advertise for two weeks, have a public hearing on and discussion. So changes can be made during that, that process.
You know, I guess all I'm really trying to get to is if we close the public hearing and for some reason or other because this is highlighted in red, but it doesn't get included, I would advocate to bring that back in. So I would have to do that at the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm not, that part in red, I am not removing. That's more like to get additional information and I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I just needed to clarify that because I'd hate to see that go away. It's kind of a, a good couple of paragraphs, you know?
So as it goes to the select board, we've got one of the second part of the apple before it goes to town meeting.
Okay.
Yes. Let me just see if I can find it very quickly. What's that section?
This one? Five?
Yeah, Section 5 of the Affordable Requirements.
Of H, Affordable Requirements.
There's a lot to attack in this document, by the way.
Yes, yes, there is.
There's, when it comes time to start letting these people build, we're giving up a lot. You should know what's going to happen. You try to get something and they're going to be like, oh, no, you have to look at Section 4-3 and, you know, have a nice life. Yeah, that's everything. Turn it through like, yeah.
Yeah, I'm feeling kind of.
Yeah, you just walk by it.
Yeah, just, they usually have, I thought they had some language here.
The definition of the affordable.
From my memory, sorry, from what I read, the fee in kind is.
That one has a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, I believe the fee in kind was sort of like, you give us this and we'll give you this, something along those lines. I have to go back and find it, but it was something along that, that line.
Right. So one of the other sentences in there, it says, "The developer or property owner shall contribute to a fee to the municipality's affordable housing trust fund," of which at this point we don't have.
Correct.
Right, but this is what I was talking to you earlier off the record, was I want to change that. So I'm hoping to change, get that changed at least by the October town meeting. So I, you know, I'm concerned about this section.
Yeah, I.
As it relates to the closing this hearing.
Well, I need, it's a case of, I sort of need to close the hearing to keep it moving forward. And then we're going to get back to this and get town council in on this as well.
Okay.
And then if we need to make adjustments, we could do that, yes, at October town meeting. But I'm hoping to get this approved in May town meeting. The other thing that is, obviously we're under the gun to get to this to the end of December of this year.
Yep.
And once we do that, it doesn't mean that we can't go back in and make changes to the bylaw. As long as, as long as the changes that are made to the bylaw do not affect your compliance and you're not doing anything that's going to, you know, void, let's say, the bylaws that, or the zoning, we're okay in making changes. So.
Right, well, I think that I'm satisfied with that. I just, I saw the different color and thought, you know, is this going to go away on the? I think it's not. I'd be willing to make a motion.
Before we do that, Mr. Kement, as this is a public hearing, any comments or questions for the public? Seeing now, seeing now, what is the will of the board?
Make a motion to approve, close the hearing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like, if I may, a motion, it would be good to have a motion to close the public hearing. A motion to accept the district boundary and forward it to the select board for their consideration and accept the draft zoning bylaws for the MBTA district with any edits and to forward that to the select board for their consideration.
So move. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Kement to close the public hearing. Seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion regards to that motion? As this is a public hearing, we'll do this in a real call vote. Hearing, no discussion. Mr. Kement?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So that would be 302. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the proposed MBTA community family overlay district as written. So motions been made?
Can I ask the same question? I mean, we're now in warning to approve this as written.
As written.
Right, but we still have the ability to make changes down the road.
Yes.
Confused on that.
I, I was thinking more like accept the draft zoning bylaws for the MBTA district with edits and to forward it to the select board for their consideration, something similar.
So the chair would entertain a motion, retract that motion. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the draft proposed MBT community family overlay district. So move. Motion has been made.
Seconded.
And seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is a fair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the.
Approved.
And the.
302. And the chair would entertain a motion to recommend and move the approved draft MBTA community family overlay district to the Towne Hansen Select Board.
What I need is you also to accept the boundary, to accept the MBTA district boundary and forward that to this. Because what's going to happen is we're going to have to change the zoning map because that boundary gets placed on the zoning map. So you're approving the map, you're approving the bylaws themselves or the draft?
So you're saying, I'm going to add another motion?
I'm going to add that motion. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend the new district boundary and move the approved draft MBTA community family overlay district to the Towne Hansen Select Board. Okay, so move. Motion's been made by Mr. Kement, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Is that suffice, Tony?
Yeah, that was.
All is a fair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
302. All right, so Tony, you'll put that on for the select boards next, you'll try to put it on for the select board's agenda?
Yes, I'm going to shoot for the 30th if their agenda is available. If not, it'll be on the 6th. This will, this will come back around to the, on the 26th of February due to advertising dates.
So we'll be looking for that to return by February 26th?
Correct.
So any edits and omits? Can you make sure that we have that in, from back from the select board? Can you have that in like an italicized font or something like that so we can see if there's any changes?
Yeah, so what the select board is going to do is they're going to give it back to the planning board and they're going to ask you to give them a report. So yes, they'll have the ability to look at it as well and if they have any edits and omits or questions, they can. And then we'll also, I'll also forget this to the town council as soon as possible as well. Because I'd like to get their feedback and get them in as early as possible.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. That's been approved. The boundaries have been approved. The movement of paperwork to the select board. Moving on the agenda, we have an appointment. Original appointment is going to now start at 6:55 in regards to the master plan. Discussions and presentations to the Master Plan Steering Committee by the old colony council regarding master plan progress. We have in the audience tonight a representative from OCPC as well as our master plan committee, Town Planner.
This evening, Rhiannon Duggan from OCPC is here. She's going to speak to the board in the Master Plan Steering Committee.
She looks so happy. Rhiannon, please.
Am I doing the whole thing right now or just the update right now?
You can do whatever you'd like.
Okay. So an update for where we're at. Not a ton of change since two weeks ago, except for Kent Powani was approved for free use for February 29th.
Perfect.
For the second public meeting. So that'll happen there and we'll work with the, within Hanson Television to come and figure out the best way to stage that. Like I mentioned, it's more like, it's not really an open forum, but like a roundtable discussion. So I'm not really sure which parts will fill and which ones will not. But I'll have a continued discussion with them on that. The Hanson Master Plan survey is up to 84 results. Do we need to be at a minimum of 100? I'd like to see more than that, but just that's like our baseline target. And then the steering committee is here tonight and we'll talk a little bit about their role in the writing part and then if anybody has ideas in terms of advertisement or that second meeting if there are topics that you think we should be highlighting then. Do you, does the board want me to move into that part now?
Sure.
Okay. I, I know this is like an auditorium style. Can I just like move up there and can everybody just kind of like shuffle so it's not so?
You can stay right where you are too, if you're comfortable.
I have the table that write everybody's ideas down, so I'm just going to slide up here and then.
So right on the end?
Yeah.
Sarah, what else?
My favorite place to be. I always say if I had known I did this much in front of people on TV, I would not have become a planner. They didn't tell me that town said Gable until I signed up. So the first thing I want to talk about is just like how we're going to move from where we are now till the end of June. So I'd like to meet once a month if possible. We have drafts written of all the chapters in various stages of completion. There's a few things that stop them from being complete once the survey is not closed yet. You can't technically finalize a chapter without getting all public input. So I won't close the survey until, I'm usually doing no more than, sorry, no less than two weeks after the second meeting. In case people just heard about the master plan and they're coming to the second meeting, it gives them two weeks to go ahead and take the survey. It also gives me another window of time to go out and do more outreach. But I can't finalize, yeah, 100% finalize a chapter until after that, until after the survey is closed. That being said, I can, for the next time we meet, have some draft chapters for people running through. Really what it is, is just checking that you think it makes sense for like your lived experience in the town. Because a lot of what we write is from a data perspective, but that doesn't mean that it really reflects like how that actually plays out in town. So there might be something in a discussion that was missed, maybe. Just really a vague example, like when I met with the police department, I talked about like where are intersections that are dangerous? And they have data that backs up certain ones, but there are other spots that you think are safety concerns that were not addressed there. We can talk about that. I know the housing chapter right now is the closest to being done. I need, the only other thing that I really want to include after I read through my colleagues' writing today is just a little bit about the MBTA zoning because this will get finalized in between the May and October meetings. This info should be in there. So I just need to get, I'll put like a rough, rough draft of it in for now. And then as close as we get in June, we'll put like that new updated draft in before we publish it, but really just as a placeholder. So you can look forward to that being more interesting, more really task oriented, going through it and seeing kind of how the layout is looking.
Can I ask you a question? Is that, I know you're talking about like when you come to the next meeting. I'm wondering if we could do like a Google Doc dump of where you are going forward. I don't know if we can do Google Docs. I think you can make it so that it can't be changed and stuff. So I wonder if that might be it. You know, that way we can see the information in real time and chew on it for a while before you even show it to the meeting instead of, you know, coming to a meeting and the documents all handed to us. Then I have to go home.
Yeah, definitely. I have it digitally available.
Yeah, because I think you have all of our email addresses. I think that might help me anyway. Because, you know, I sit at my computer all the time, so.
Yeah, so we could do like, I can give the chapters out ahead of time and then I can kind of condense everyone's comments and then we can have like discussions about them. Usually comments are like, yeah, sure, that makes sense. We'll put it in. But if there's something like people have like conflicting ideas, we can talk about those things. As those chapters pop up.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Can it be a single doc that carries all edits in the margin so we can see each other's comments or do you want feedback from each other?
I'm fine with that. Yeah, I'll make like a copy of the document and I'll like my version. And then, then you guys can see each other's comments. That works for me. That way, like you're saying, you don't, not everybody sounds the same. You spelled their wrong on stage three. The other thing I'll suggest, it's a small steering committee, which is good, usually better, easier to get through discussion. But one thing you might want to recommend doing is for specific chapters, having them go out to subcommittees. So I would suggest there's a housing commission in town. We might want to allow them to pre-read the housing chapter and see if they feel that like their comments that I heard in that first CPC meeting are being met. And then for the open space and natural resources, conservation will read it. And then if the CPC committee wants to read that as well. And then just make sure that the people who actually put these things into play are agreeing with what we're writing. That way I don't write you guys a plan that doesn't get used. Would be my big suggestion for moving that writing piece forward.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that writing?
So couldn't, like for some of that, you could probably do maybe Zoom meetings? I mean, I'm okay with that. Like during the pandemic, I liked that. You know, you just have to be good from the waist up, you know?
Yeah. No, I definitely don't mind doing Zoom meetings at all. And I think also, I appreciate the planning board hosting these, but I also know like your agendas are going to fill in the spring. And steering committee technically doesn't need a quorum. So as you get dizzier, you don't have to necessarily worry about this. And when we're talking about the writing, it's not available for public input yet. So it might be better in that way. I'll get less angry emails that way is really what I'm trying to say.
Now, we have two members on the steering committee, so we can keep the planning board updated if need be.
Absolutely. Exactly.
So we can do Zoom meetings.
And I email Tony more than probably anybody else. So he's usually got a pretty good grasp of what's happening.
Oh, no, 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 we are constituent, my team.
What's the target date for the first public hearing?
Um.
Is it June?
I'd say end of May.
End of May?
End of May or very early June. We're supposed to close out for June 30th, I think, is because there's certain grants that go with it. So my plan would be the public will give a lot of comments and also all public comments have to be reported in the plan. So I need to make sure before I get that printed that those are all documented. So the actual finalizing and formatting takes a bit of time. So we can see like if the board's moving through chapters really quick and we've closed the survey and there are certain chapters we feel good about, we can put just a few chapters at a time when we want to public to. For 14 day, which sometimes it's easier to digest because nobody's going to want to look at this document in its whole 250 pages in one go. So that could be a better option and we can, you know, see how we're looking at the end of next month and see if that's a good option.
I don't see Durante, you may not have access, you have access to the email or no?
Not really, no.
Okay, so if you need to get something to Mrs. Durante, send it to our office and then we can call her and we can get it to her.
Okay.
And if she makes any edits, we can just give it a scan.
Yeah.
And send it to you.
You'd like a one in the near future.
Okay.
If you, what they'll, what they can do is they can get it to us and we'll call you.
Okay.
And we can, you can come pick it up. And if you make any edits, we can, you can always give it to us. We can make copies, scan it and then email it back to you. So.
So great idea. Thank you. Anything else on writing? Writing, reading, editing? The next thing I have is talking about the survey and getting it better for November. Are any of you on Facebook? If your, or social media platforms, if you're interested in sharing it, we have it with a graphic for it and it's on the local planning council. It should be shared at least once on the Hanson page by now, which I would double check. But if you, you don't have to set it up personally, but if you know of groups that a lot, Facebook groups that a lot of people in Hanson are on, that they're posting things on, I can request that it get posted through like the OCPC platform, shared there. That was, so East Bridgewater is kind of on the same schedule as you guys and the Buzz Around was able to really push their survey really hard and fast with their paper because a lot of people follow it. But they were also able to back it up because their editor shared it to a bunch of Facebook groups. And that was like another large push that got it out. I know that Facebook and politics don't always go great, but it's a survey and they have to click on it and finish the whole survey and remember all the comments they had before they go back to Facebook. So hopefully they'll forget them. But that's like one way of going about it. And then I can also print out flyers that have the QR code and where you can pick up a paper copy. For people who don't do the digitally, are there spots in town that you think I should put those flyers?
Most Sony Barber and Modern Barber, if they'll take them.
Okay.
Can I also make just one quick suggestion? I know like when you, if you go on Facebook and start talking about a master plan, people don't care, they only care about whatever subject they may be interested in. So I wonder, you know, calling out, you know, like don't forget, you know, like mention the fact that it's the master plan, but there's all kinds of subjects that people might be more interested in than the overall plan itself. And that may drive them toward the survey so they can get what they want heard.
Yeah, so kind of like a tagline of like this is what's in the master plan.
Yeah.
That lists the topics.
Have you tried WHCA Express?
Uh, Matt is working on that currently.
I know the PA committee, you guys did a survey and we had a thing at camp, I think it was at one of the schools, right? And we've had them in the past. And I know one of the surveys we did for the community preservation was a smashing success. We had over 200 people, you know, answer the survey. And I don't know how that was done. I wasn't part of that part of it, but I know who was and I can reach out to them and ask them. You know, when you go to a selectance meeting, bring that up and I think you'll get some traction from that as well.
I am working on that too, working on getting on the select board's agenda.
Librarians, sons of news, whatever, all members?
They do. And they have a copy of it and I will either check or wait for one of you to tell me that you saw it in the library in its letter. They have copy of the digital and then I am also.
I think they have QR code at their desk.
Okay, that's great.
Want to check again?
I'm supposed, do you remember where I'm going there? I'm going there sometime soon. I want to say it's February 13. Okay, so February 13th, I'm going to be at the library, and I will get that publicly advertised. I'm just doing a sit-in session, I'll have the surveys, you can answer questions. A lot of people will just walk by QR codes, even if it's at the library's front desk. So my goal will just be to sit there with surveys and answer questions about the process and advertise following events.
Senior Center is in the same facility, if that's helpful?
I'll make sure that they have their advertising up.
I believe we have another strategic planning meeting coming up at Camp Kauan soon. We could always, that's recorded, so we could always make mention of it there as well.
Happy to attend a new update there too, if that is of interest.
Absolutely, yeah, I think. Because I think the goal of that plan is a zero to five, and obviously the master plan's like a zero to 15. And my humble opinion, we should both be going in the same direction.
Yes, I'd like all the plans to start to. That is the dream. And then the OSRP, your Open Space Recreation Plan, will be up in about a year. So we'll make sure that the things that want to be included in that update will be in the master plan already.
It's up next, it's up this year.
Yeah, I keep saying next year, somebody likes it when I say this year, so.
There's, I'm trying to look at getting funding for that.
Okay.
To get that re-updated. And same thing with our housing production plan, that's going to expire, and I have to find funding to get that done.
Okay, do you want me to have Lori emailing you about?
Sure, sure, because we've, we've reached out, I've reached out to the company that handled the housing production plan. And we had some communication, and they seemed to have just fallen off the face of the earth.
Okay.
And I know that OCPC, I think, handled the Open Space Recreation Plan, so, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know, and I'll make sure that updating the HPGs in the master plan as well. I didn't have that listed as a goal, I didn't realize that one was expiring in June.
Yeah, because I'd actually would like to sort of at least be able to show that we're in process of moving it and getting it updated versus start from scratch.
Definitely.
So can I ask a quick question on the housing production plan? When does that due? When does have to be completed or updated?
I think, I believe it expires in May.
Because, you know, that was a, the CPC paid for that, so I'm just wondering, you know, if the price was right. Right, there are still some funds left in our administrative account that could help pay for that, so.
Okay.
Just another source to think about.
Thank you.
I don't, I'm not allowed to say like when OCPC can and cannot commit to things, but I can say that OCPC does write housing production plans.
Yeah.
And I show up to work tomorrow with a new project, I will be in trouble.
I think for us, in that respect, it's a question of finances, you know, we have to use our administrative funds, so, and those are limited. So, you know, we've spent some of it already, so we have to be careful that whatever it is, it's under that, whatever we have left.
Right. And I think like Tony's saying, getting that update done so you don't have to do a start from scratch plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Type, it saves you a ton of money in the long run and keeps you in good standing.
That's the whole key, is I want to, I want to show that we're still in good standing and that we're still making progress versus just letting it expire.
Yeah, and same with the OSRP, like a lot of the work that the CPC wants to do is eligible for DCR grants and park grants, I think are under DCR. But you have to have your OSRP in date to apply for those, so. It's just about, it can be like, like you said, like in that open draft phase, but it has to be known to this date when that's happening. So just good things to think about, so that way you don't fall behind on grant applications that you're looking to do. Any other ideas for advertising?
Could you blimp?
Veterans Post?
What was that?
The Veterans Post.
Veterans Post?
Yeah, every two weeks they have a meet raffle, that's pretty well attended. And they have a significant membership as well. So maybe there might be another avenue to look into, and going back to earlier when we were talking about tailoring to issues that they might be interested in. This planning board looked into seeing if we could get some veterans affordable housing done on one of our sites. And see, people seem to really like the idea, so if we could like tailor that a little toward them, and that hope that maybe they could get some housing in there, they may be happy to fill out that survey and advocate for it as well.
Tony, what chapter did you say?
Could you blimp? This one might be, I mean, it's minute, but we do have these flashing signs that we have in town, right, that post information, I mean, we could look at that. You know?
Yeah, I mean, it could be something super simple too.
It's not the most high-tech, but the reader board still says happy holidays, it's probably available.
Okay, great.
Did Valentine say it's coming up? Yeah, we're not picking out what holidays, just.
I'm just saying, we could probably send you something.
The schools send a newsletter?
They might have a virtual backpack now. No more flyers, right? An email. Oh, yeah, PTO.
Uh, yeah, and the school boards do send out emails. I'll look into it, school communities either really want to be involved or really don't want to be involved. So I, but it's worth looking into, and I can do that.
Is there a town employee communication? Yeah.
Yes.
Is that appropriate?
Yeah, it is, I'm.
We do have a.
I don't like that this meeting's recorded.
We do have a news, we do have a newsletter.
Trying to clown.
I want to answer your question, and I don't want to say anything.
Right, we do have a newsletter that been going out every month, we could put it in there.
Okay.
I can reach out to Strategic Planning Solutions, they send us the newsletter, I can fill it out and just get it, get it done.
I did not hear back from my source that I asked to send things around, so that would be good. That's not.
Okay.
So I'm not necessarily volunteering that I would do this, but I know there were some surveys done in the past where people took the survey and went down to Shaw's Market and the town dump, and literally, I wouldn't say accosted people, but they certainly got them to, you know, pay attention a little bit. So maybe that's something, you know, that might work as well.
You can find me a volunteer for the town dump, I'll provide surveys. Shaw's Market, I can look into having staff, is Shaw, is the Shaw's in town, or is it on the town line? Okay. It's low, sorry.
It's just up the street. It's okay.
There's only debate about a pizza shop, whether it's in Hanson or Whitman, depends on what YouTube video you watch.
Okay. Those catch a lot of people.
Some people know what I'm talking about.
Abbot Davis Day, he lost track of what time he's at.
He used to live in Abboton. And I think they mark you out in front, I think it says happy Lidda.
Okay, that is, I will start working on these things and getting posters out. What was my other thing? Talked about writing, talked about flyers, the meeting, the next meeting, the next public meeting.
One suggestion, I'm sorry. Pairing up with the transfer station, where they buy the bags in Shaw's, it's the only location that you can buy transfer station bags, right, thank.
Oh. Okay, both of those.
Pair those flyers up with that spot.
I prefer these. Okay. So the next public meeting, which is February 29th, is going to be at Camp Kauanee. And my game plan is to have like printed maps that people can write on as like a hands-on activity, and then just like allowing people to discuss things, and then I'll have the kind of staff there to take notes. Are there?
Sleep day.
It is, yes. It felt very fake writing that date on something, like a trick, like don't show up, it's February 29th. So with that, everybody who was at the first meeting is currently in this room. But are there topics that you think, that you talked about that night that you think we should talk about more, or other things that have come up since? So one of the ones that will be, will be traffic and pedestrian concerns. And I'll have like an oversized printed map of the streets, and we can even do like one that's just of like town center, like within like a few mile blocks or other specific high-density areas that people can like write where their concerns are, or they can be like very specific, we could do like color dots of like, if it's this color, it needs a sidewalk, if it's this color, it needs a crosswalk. Or sometimes people just like doing like a, put a sticky and a number, and then write like an associated comment.
I can give you our updated complete streets list, which prioritizes which intersections. As a matter of fact, I've applied for a grant under the complete streets, for the intersection of Liberty and Winter, which is right out front of the town hall. That happens to be actually number two on the list.
Okay.
So I can send that to you.
Yeah, and that'll help me frame like where to zoom in maps too, for people to see. Why don't you be able to do an overlay of like targeted data? Like the police station said that they could give me data for where they record the most accidents or most concerns, which you might have access already.
Yeah, I think they sent me something like that, let me check.
Okay.
One other thing we talked about at the original meeting was a one-page roadmap, explain the process.
Yes, that's good. Thank you. I think another one I would like to do, based on conversation, would be to do some type of conversation around parks and open space in town. I know it's of large interest for the town, and if anybody has feedback on how they want to frame that, like, do you want to know like what updates everybody wants on each park? Do we want to talk about? I met with Phil Collins, and we talked about like a lack of connectivity between parks, or about parks and getting to other places, and like the lack of trails that kind of connect you from one thing to another. I don't know if that would be of interest, or something that we think about, okay.
Yeah, you know, I think in our last meeting, I won't go into glory detail, you know, we talked about the fact that we have a sidewalk project that's not going to make it to two sites very close by. So I'd like to see that in the master plan, so people understand that, you know, that's a, it should be a priority, if it isn't already, that, you know, we could at least look at funding a lot more sidewalks to those areas. For that whole, you know, related to that whole connecting everything.
The the plant, the, I am going, I am going to pursue a grant under the One Stop for the plans that were done in 2014 that show sidewalks from High Street all the way to Route 58. And so that goes by Crooker Place, so it's, you know, that whole, the whole stretch, LG Thomas, everything.
So the, at the, at the beginning of Crooker Place, there's a piece of property there that I probably, I don't know if I should say this on.
It's derelict.
Yeah, well, it's derelict right now, and it has the potential we may end up owning that. So my hope was that we could put a parking lot there and add it to the Bay Circuit Trail so that people could park there and access the Bay Circuit Trail and other areas nearby with some signage, so that people know, you know, when they go into the parking lot, that right up the road is, you know, the county hospital property, and, you know, if you take a right, you're in, in Burridge Pond. Because, you know, I've always felt it was important to have access from the MBTA. And I think Matt, we talked about that before, was going all the way out, you know, from the MBTA all the way out to Burridge Pond. I mean, it's a real asset for the town and the community, you know? So I don't know if we can get that in there too.
Just so, we have money earmark for examining a boardwalk along Main Street. We also have $25,000 earmark to go towards the Mont Ponce area for basically a park, and there's a park down on Hancock Street, which the money would be used for to do some updates down there. So I've been in contact with the Parks and Recreation folks. Right now, they're sort of wrapping up the, was it the middle school that had the Newfields put in?
That's right.
And so this is on their radar to sort of be the next project. So it'll be $25,000 after speaking to Parks and Recreation. I believe it's going to be more like seed money, and then they'll probably go to the CPC to look for additional funding to update that park.
Okay, so we'll make sure that the Open Space Recreation Chapter goes to them too.
If you want, I can make you a laundry list of stuff and send it to you.
More information.
Is it possible to make a, like, almost like a vision map, like an overlay, right? Of the possibility of what we just talked about, you know, like from the MBTA out to these areas, so that people could kind of get a conceptual understanding of, you know, what the potential is visually?
Yeah, do you think? I'm wondering if we start with a base map, and then prior to, I can draw in like current projects. And then from there, people can talk about where the gaps are, or where they'd like to see it go next. Like, I understand sidewalks take way longer time than people realize, because it's the funding, right? We talked about, they're so expensive, and it's not like we can just like be like, okay, boom, all of this part of town is sidewalks. So we can start by tracing out where the existing projects are, and then allow people to talk about where they think like the next best are. And we can use the complete streets list too, I can maybe get some.
Can we have a definition of done for the existing projects? Because if it's just conceptual, like we're putting seed money in to look at streetlights on Main Street, but it's only in the assessment phase, are we committing to that by putting it into the current projects list? I wouldn't want to offer a misconception that that's a done deal when it's not. So status doesn't even have to be, to be called the current project.
Well, isn't the master plan a visionary document anyway?
So, yeah, I would back up by saying that assessing and feasibility are active projects, even though they're, they're just in a feasibility stage. And it doesn't mean that they can't be canceled at any time. Because a feasibility study could determine that not doing it is the better option. For the master plan, we tend to use open-ended language, such as consider. Because we want the town to consider working towards whatever it is that they're working towards, but it allows for flexibility of that to not work.
I do understand that for the master plan, but the definition of an existing project, I wouldn't want to imply that there's funding for completion.
Right, for things that are like earmarking.
Well, if we're talking about like a map that shows current projects, it would be like an actual project, not a people building.
Right, and then we can, we can, if we want to include something that is a feasibility study or a hope, we can like note that that is something else, that that is not, okay, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, because master plan is the wish list, right?
Yes.
And if we're adding wish list items to a wish list, it feels a little bit. So the next meeting of the steering committee would be the 29th of February?
That's the public meeting.
That's the public meeting, okay.
So I would do we can meet the week before, we can meet the week after. The benefit to meeting the week after is the week before, I can definitely have chapters out to you guys, and then you guys can have all the time you want to look at them before we talk about them, and we can also talk about almost like a summary of what happened at that February 29th meeting. Or we can meet twice each year.
Because I can put you in for like the first meeting in March of the planning board. Do you want to do this again, if this works for you?
Yeah, let's pencil that in for now, and then if we want to do just a steering committee meeting in between that, we can do that too.
So just to make sure I'm understanding this all fairly, we don't really need to meet before the 29th, right?
Yeah, I can just pass along information digitally over the next month.
Right, because you're still, like, you're writing chapters, but really the goal right now is still surveys.
And public participation, yeah. I'll send out, I'll send everybody an email or a document copy that you can get from Tony of the community profile, which is like the big bulk of data, like that first meeting was like a small summary of it. The bigger documents are already mostly finalized, I mean, it can be changed anytime, but it's finalized. I can make sure that you all have access to that if you want to go through it, and access to any survey graphics, if you want to share them with people you know. And And then as I get chapters, I can send them to you for like a rough, um, a rough draft. So you guys can get feedback on them and then if we add things or change them in based on the survey, like they noted, like I can italicize, we'll just change that way, it's just a quicker marker at the end. It's just we're moving, this contract is something with like nine months to finish this master plan. I did not work for OCPC when that happened. Realistically, I want like 16 to 18 months to do a master plan, so we're just working really fast. So it's a little bit of like working, moving as far as I can and then backtracking and then progressing forward again.
So all the documents you send us that are printable, you're going to have them watermarked with the draft on it so people are sure that, you know, this, okay, this isn't, you know, the end of the game, it's just a draft.
Yeah, I'll make sure that I do that. I won't for the community profile because it is technically like already public.
Well, I guess for whatever documents you think might, you know, if they were shared inappropriately, you know, with how it's supposed to be changed with the.
Right.
Do you have a time set for the 29th?
I think I have it set for 6:30 because that's kind of like the running tally. Any other thoughts?
Do you need support or you can't qualify?
If all of you are able to be there, that is great. And then you can decide when you get there if you just want to participate or if you want to help like facilitate a conversation. I'm fine with either.
And bring three friends each.
Yeah, that's your only job is to bring two households other than your own.
Friends around you.
I mean, that's what we're having out in the woods.
Now, I have two items, I was hoping I could include it. My thinking is under the CPC legislation, we can have a computer, Community Housing Trust, and we can also have an Open Space Trust. And I won't bore you with all the details of all of that, but I'm hoping that we can get that in there so people have an awareness of that.
Sure.
Because there's a proposal that will be coming up, so.
And the Community Housing Trust is the thing that you were looking to get put together quickly for the MBTA? Or would those be separate?
No, it's still, it's kind of, you know, all big.
It's one of those, the MBTA is probably a little fewer steps ahead.
Yeah.
At this point.
Right.
Because of the deadline, but that's something that.
But that would ideally be the trust that would support.
Well, that's, that's my thinking. We're still in the um.
Okay.
We're, we're, yeah, we're working it out.
It's something that's called out in the, in the document that he spoke of earlier. And it's also called out like, you know, anytime you want to do affordable housing, uh, you bet, if you want to use CPC funds, it's much easier to go through a community trust. So the trust did have multiple functions and it hasn't all been planned out yet, but something I'd like to see at least in the document so people are aware of.
Well, we should also include like a general um definition of the CPC, their committee and their work. I know that you sent me like your past projects and your active projects.
Yeah, we have that document that you're looking for.
Yeah, you gave me a copy and if I need another one, I can reach out. But we can put a summary of that in just to show like, again, like talking about, there's a million different plans to try and convince them into this plan.
It's hard to explain.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we pick out like a few key projects for that. Does the Conservation Commission already have a trust or just a land trust?
They, I, they have neither.
Neither?
Yeah, so I know like through CPC and many communities have been doing some research on this where, um, you know, if you have an open space committee, right, you know, CPC has a, um, you know, can put funds into an open space trust. But if people don't want to donate money to the open space, right, they can also put that in the trust. So uh, the way it's written is um complicated at this point. And I've reached out to Kate, Town Council, and her and I are going to try to work, hammer out like how that document may look in the end. So this is all, like I said, preliminary, but you know, I want to hope, get the town to move in that direction.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
You have a lot of irons in the fire to say the least.
Any last thoughts, ideas? All right, that's it. Walk off. More time.
You know, right back to 6:30.
Perfect.
Well, it never happens.
I talk so slowly, I move backwards. There you go.
Thank you very much to OCPC for the presentation, the Master Plan Steering Committee for your time and your efforts. So this is all great work, everybody's doing great work, it's almost thankless, but will at least say thank you. So make sure it gets out there. And so it's the 29th, what time?
6:30.
29th at 6:30, you can't qualify. Okay, great.
Are you guys in a big hurry to go? Because I wanted to ask you two a couple of questions before you go. It'll take me, it won't take Tony a ton of time, just a couple of minutes.
Can you modify the agenda and do that now?
So do, well, we can take a quick recess.
Okay.
So motions, any recess? Motion's been made, any discussion?
No.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote for, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. Thank you, guys.
7:51, we're going to call the planning board back into session for January 22nd at the time being 7:51, as I said. Uh, moving on our agenda, we have board business. Uh, does anybody have anything for the board, uh, for board business? Anything significant? Moving on for administration, town planner update, review administrative assistant office hours increase, warrant article, and any invoices. Town planner.
So we, Kim and I have worked together on, well, first off, uh, Mr. Chair, we have to go back, improvements to private way application for roller coaster.
Oh, my apologies, I'm sorry. I put a check mark on that. Thank you. Sorry, you've got to go back on the appointments. Uh, continued discussion, improvement to private ways, applicant Bob Gosselin, KNG Development Corporation seeks a positive determination for completed work on roller coaster road in conjunction with proposed construction activity at 120 Roller Coaster Road, assesses map 79, lot 38. Town planner.
Last meeting, Mr. Kemet had a concern regarding some of the language in the agreement, specifically to say the word and/or.
And/or.
I did pass the uh document to Town Council. They said, yep, they were, uh, they were okay with the document and going to just and, so highway department and planning board versus and/or, yep, take that out. So what I'll do now is pass that back to the applicant, have his attorney revise it, and then send it back to me. And hopefully at the next meeting, we can maybe.
It'll be a finalization.
We can hopefully move it.
It's only one little word.
Yep.
No, never get it off. Yeah, it is. Uh, can I just, one, one quick thing on that, on the roller coaster road thing? I know that construction began before, like, somebody jumped a gun somewhere on that one. And I guess my question would be, I think we need to call them out on it, A, call them out on it, B, figure out a way to make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Other than that, you know, I'm good with it.
Yeah, so there was a permit issue. It seems like there was, was there a permission?
Yeah.
So it's a permit issue.
I think what, I'm not sure, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but I believe that construction began before this document was done and we're now signing this retroactively. So um, I just want that in the record that, you know, this is a retroactive thing and this shouldn't be happening, you know?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to make a motion to continue that?
I'll make a motion to continue that. There's a motion on the floor to continue the discussion for improvement to private ways, applicant Bob Gossin, KNG Development Corporation for 120 Roller Coaster Road. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion in regards to that, continue discussion. Seeing none, all is favorable, signify by saying aye. Opposed, 302. So that will be on for our next extended date. Uh, so my apologies, I took board business out of, out of order. So back to that board business, there wasn't any updates. We're going to go into our administration, town planner update.
Um, so Kim and I have worked together on crafting an article and a letter to the Finance Committee regarding um the request to increase the hours for that position from nineteen and a half to actually 22.5. And uh, so what I'm going to do is take both of those and submit them as required to the Town Administrator's Office and the Finance Committee. And hopefully, if they wish to discuss it, I put in that letter that, you know, we're available to discuss, uh, discuss the position and the time if they have any questions.
Yeah, that'd be a good, a good thing to do, have a discussion with them.
So I will keep the, uh, planning board up to date on the progress.
Yeah, do you want a motion on that, Tony?
Uh, if you'd like to make a, if you'd like to make a.
Chairman, I'm going to take a motion to favorably recommend the letter dated January 19th, 2024 to Finance Committee, Planning Department, and Planning Office. Motion's been made and all seconded. Properly seconded by Mr. Kemet. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is favorable, signify by saying aye. Opposed, 302, Tony. So that letter will vote for and favorably, thank you. Invoices?
Uh, we actually do not have any invoices. I put that in there because uh sometimes the invoices just sort of pop up. Um, I just have a couple of quick things. So I have been looking at trying to find funding for Pratt Place culvert replacement. Pratt Place is listed under our MVP, our Municipal Vulnerability Plan.
Considered a private road?
No, it's a public.
But it's not considered a bridge, it's considered a large culvert.
So we do have the ability to pursue Municipal Vulnerability Plan Action Grants. And you can file an expression of interest, which I've done, uh, for that and another project. And I am actually going to have, I've had some feedback. So what they do is you give them an expression of interest and they'll give you feedback and then you can move forward with the, the grant application. So I met with a member from the state on another project. Tomorrow I have one scheduled regarding the Pratt Place. The other potential for funding is uh ARPA money, that the town has access to some ARPA money through the county. And so we may be able to get some funding for that there. Um, I've reached out requesting some estimates from some companies, uh, three of them, actually four of them, and so that we can pass along to the Town Administrator to kind of get an idea or a sense of what the costs would be associated with that project.
Can I make a quick suggestion? The, that sort of, uh, river is a tributary to the northern south river watershed. And they have grants, they're trying to daylight most of um that river, you know, take out, take out culverts and things like that. So I mean, nothing may come of it, but it's worthy of a look.
Okay, thank you. Elsie Thomas, uh, I attended a Hanson Housing Authority meeting last Thursday with Mr. Kemet and the Town Administrator. We discussed Elsie Thomas, we discussed Meeting House, is it Meeting House Lane?
Meeting House Lane.
Thank you. And Philip Street. Unfortunately, uh, Elsie Thomas and Meeting House Lane are out of our control. So there really isn't anything I can do there as far as pursuing grants to expand those properties at this time. That may change in the future. I did have an additional meeting with Mass Housing to update them on the meeting with the Hanson Housing Authority. They still have an interest in examining the Philip Street project, uh, Philip Street property. I've forwarded them information and they're going to review it and then they're going to get back to me on that. So um, that is pretty much what I have at this time. Uh, the one, I guess the one last thing is I didn't know if, um, I know we don't have a full complement. There had been discussion at one time, right now the meetings are audio only, there was discussion of possible video and audio. I didn't know if the board was still entertaining that, because obviously if that is the case, uh, then we'll have to budget for prefacing cameras or reaching out to Women's and Cable Access to provide equipment to do so. So I just didn't know if that's something, I mean, obviously there's, we're missing two members tonight, I just wanted to throw that out there, uh, have you guys roll it around and see what you may want to do there. And I think, uh, the only, I, the one last item, uh, the One Stop Program, expressions of interest are going to open up on, I believe it's the 9th of February. Again, I'll be pursuing five, five projects that I've sort of listed on my list upstairs. If I'm reading everything right, they've made some changes that now you can, it's almost like unlimited expressions of interest you could put in, not just five. So I have to sort of circle back on that and just double check, but I mean, I have at least five on my list to pursue. And we have a grant for the starter home zoning. I just have to talk to our Town Administrator. I see the contract, but I have to verify with her that the contract was actually executed so that we can start moving forward on that. And the rest of the projects through the grants are moving forward. I did mention to Verdantis regarding lighting on the pedestrian improvements from Elm to High Street, and they're going to take a look at that.
Okay.
As part of the project. Uh, tomorrow night, I'm actually going to the Select Board to update them on the pedestrian grant and master plan and MBTA. Well, not, not the master plan, I'm sorry, the MBTA and the pedestrian improvements to bring them up to speed almost going on there.
Well, it's not mentioned in the master plan.
Well, I, I can, I can mention it, but that's, you know, that's sort of like OCPC's.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
We're sort of, you know, they're sort of, that's sort of their project, uh, I'm assisting. Uh, so.
Anything from the TIF?
Uh, there was some uh updates on uh, on that where still, there's still some money that's been earmarked. I, and from what I've read through the Town Administrator is the issue is actually obtaining the earmarked funds. We, she's reached out to um the parties that be that have a handle on that and we're sort of, it's sort of stalled a little bit, let's say. So there really hasn't been much movement yet.
Are the other towns playing well on the sandbox? Have they come to the sandbox?
I don't even think that, I'm not sure that we've got to the sandbox. I mean, at this point, we know that there really hasn't been an interest. I think we're trying to get our hands on that earmark so we have a better, a better place.
That was another, that was another major sidewalk improvement corridor.
Yes.
That was pretty much initiated by the state itself.
That's right.
You know, they're the ones that pushed it.
And, and, and what was proposed was a sidewalk and it's a small park. You know, it was.
Yeah, it was a nice park.
It's significant stuff.
Yeah, yeah, at that time, I think it was 13 million, which probably has gone up since, obviously, so.
So how long does that last? I mean, like, um, they're going to say at some point fish are cut to eight, right?
Yes, at some point they will say that. And it'd be, and I've said it, just as many other folks have probably said it as well, it'd be a real shame to lose a project that size and that cost.
And of that value.
And of that value. To just have it die on the vine would be a real shame, so.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
Now, I heard people talking about One Stop that, you know, about housing. So I guess my simple stupid question is, uh, when you say, when you're dealing with the state, we say One Stop, is that the only stop or are there other stops along the way? So, you know, I'm going with that.
Yeah, One Stop is just a classification of the process.
Yeah, yeah, the, well, the One Stop, all it is is just basically, uh, as, as the name says, you can go to one place to find a whole bunch of grants versus trying to find a whole bunch of grants that are out there in the ether. So they're trying to make it simple. So you apply with your expressions of interest and then they review it and say, okay, this grant application, or this expression of interest should go to this organization, this one should go to this organization. And then those organizations review it and make. And then those organizations review it and make a determination as to whether or not they want to award the grant.
Because I know, like, at the conference, one of the people was saying that they helped finance a affordable housing complex and they had One Stop grants. So, I'm like, I wonder if that's the same stop, you know?
Yeah, I would say it is the same stop.
If you go on that website, it's crazy. You can go down a rabbit hole for, so you know the sun's gone down. Links after links after links.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I've, I've gone down the rabbit hole and, you know, it is, it's just like, there's just so much information that I lose my hair.
But, you know, one other quick...
Is that what happened?
Just want to bring up one other quick thing, is, you know, like, all these, a lot of these things that we've been discussing, oh my God, I just lost my train of thought, never mind. Just late, I gotta go. Oh, God. I'll think of it in a minute. But, no, move on, I'm sorry.
Tony, did you happen to see that email I sent about trying to highlight HOAs?
I did.
Like HOA month or whatever?
I did.
Can we throw them on as a discussion? So, I had reached out to Tony to talk about trying to highlight HOA month, you know, March is Hanson's HOA month, to get the HOAs to recognize that there's some stuff, maybe, maybe some compliances that are not being met or maybe some things I'm not on file or so. Maybe we can put that on as a runner for next meeting as a agenda item?
Well, you know, I kind of looked into that a little and, you know, there's some town treasurers, right, who they reach out, they send a thing to the HOA saying, you know, here's your compliance issue.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you've got taxes, things like that, and all kinds of things that the HOA is supposed to comply with, like stormwater management reports, things like that. So, I wonder if that's something that could go out that way?
Yeah, I think they have a, there is a list of the current HOAs, which I may have sent to you, Mr. Chair, at some point in time, I'm not sure. But I do have a current list of the HOAs and there's something that potentially we could reach out to them, as just some kind of letters, hey, just, you know. The last thing I'll throw at you is Meadowbrook subdivision. I drove by there today on the way in and noticed that they did have put an apron in. And also, you may be pleased to know, after our meeting with them, they have been filing their stormwater pollution prevention reports.
Wow. They give me a push.
I've received, I've received three to date.
SWP?
SWP, S W P P, so.
Is the, is the apron the size that we were asking?
I didn't, when I drove by, it was kind of getting dark because I wasn't in the office today due to a personal matter. But tomorrow morning, on the way into work, I'm going to stop by, I'll take a look at it. But it's definitely an improvement than the water that was coming off the site. It's probably not perfect to the plan, but it's, you know, it's definitely a lot better than...
It's a step.
It's a step forward, yeah.
I think they were a little bit of a swamp when they first got in.
Yeah.
Hey, if you think about it, there's going to be trucks coming and going probably at the same time, so it has to be at least, what, 11 feet wide, right?
Yeah, I think it was even bigger than that. That's proposed on the plan, so.
Yes, we instilled a loading and unloading area as well.
So, the one thing is, they put down the steel plates as they discussed at the meeting and they discussed with the highway superintendent. And they put down some, an apron. And like I said, tomorrow, I'm going to swing by there, take a look, probably take some photographs for the file. And so, get a better idea of what's happening. But the good part is, I had told them, you need to start submitting the SWP, stormwater, the...
SWP report.
The reports, and they have, which is a good, which is a good thing.
We got three of them.
Yeah.
Sweet.
Yeah, after the rainstorms and so forth, so it's a good thing to see. So, hopefully, we can keep that.
Want to text Mr. Kabash?
You know, hopefully, we can keep that moving.
That helps the history, too.
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, hopefully, we can keep it moving. And hopefully, you know, within, let's say, maybe every four months or so, try and get them, the engineer, the site contractor, and the developer in a meeting with the department heads so we can go over and have a, you know, an update on stuff. And that's it, that's all I have.
Anybody else have anything to go to the order of Town Planner? I attend motion for our next planning board meeting to be Monday, February 12th, 2024.
So, move.
Motion's been seconded, that's at 6:30. Motion been seconded, any discussion regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Host, motion carries, we'll have another planning board meeting on February 12th. Motion, motion, and a 10 motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move. Motion been made and seconded, discussion regards to adjournment. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Host, at 8:10, that motion carries, we are adjourned.